So, good afternoon everyone. Thanks for joining us today for this virtual town hall with Dr. Stephen Kreitz. On behalf of the Grad School, S E L C Graduate Student Assembly and the Student Government Association, I'd like to warmly welcome you all along with my friend and colleague here, Tolu. We all, we welcome you all to this town hall.
I'm Adino Tolokasamo. Thank you Nakul. I welcome you all once again. And I'm representing UTEP SJ. So I'm the collegiate senator representing graduate school, graduate students. So SG is basically Student Government Association at UTEP which represents all UTEP students. And basically we're like a license between the UTEP administration and the students also. So we provide official voice through which student opinions may be expressed. We also ensure students' participation in university decision-making process. We hope to defend the rights of each student and we work together with the administration for the advancement of the university community.
Thanks Tolu. Hello everyone. My name is Nakul Karle. I am a PhD candidate in Environmental Science and Engineering PhD program. Currently, I am also the president of the Graduate Student Assembly. In a brief, let me tell you what Graduate Student Assembly here at UTEP is and what it stands for. So the Graduate Student Assembly is the official representative body for the graduate students here at UTEP. We, the GSA addresses issues that are important to its constituents not only as graduate students, but also as graduate teaching assistants and research assistants. The assembly's goals are to identify the needs and concerns of the graduate students, consider possible solutions and present these to the grad school dean and other administrators. Thank you.
So with these, I'll be welcoming the dean of grad school. His name is Dr. Stephen Kreitz. He's a professor of psychology. He's also the associate provost for various studies. With much excitement, I would like us to welcome Dean Kreitz as we found him calling.
For coming showing up today, but also for all that you've done through the year. I've been pretty involved in kind of our response to kind of the coronavirus and so forth. And I followed closely what happened at other institutions. And you know, from, it appears like everything that's happening here at UTEP. I mean, we've been in many ways much better than other institutions in spite of the fact that we've been is terrible right now in our past. And I know a lot of that is up to all of you in your role, both as students, as mentors to undergraduates, as instructors, et cetera type of thing. So thank all of you for you've done, for what you've been doing and keep up the good work. We're closing in on the end, end of the semester, unfortunately not COVID, but hopefully that will end. Well, I'm going to add a couple of things that I want to present to you. The first thing that I want to present is some, the results of a survey that we did last spring. And this was something that the TSA helped us design and launch and promote. And so we started this, I think, last March. We kept it open for a few weeks, but not long enough. You know, essentially what was happening at the time is COVID was really starting to ramp up. The university was about to close. The nature of the survey might have meant that the data that we got before COVID and after would have been problematic. So hopefully close it early. But I'd like to kind of show you what we were doing and why. And then also enlist your help in moving forward with the next survey. We, we sent the survey, as I mentioned, in the spring and shut it down before we would like to. We would, we would have liked to have more data in the survey, but like I said, we were worried about COVID and the changes there. So this went to every graduate student at UTEP. And you can kind of see the responses there. You know, 27% of the people responded with doctoral students, 73 master students. When we do the survey, we're trying to protect the students', you know, identity and so forth. So we don't get precise numbers and you can kind of see that where it says between 75 and 100 doctoral students. We're not saying exactly how many, just giving people an idea about where we were. But graph below shows the distribution of responses by college. So about 6% of responses were from business, 20% from education, et cetera. And you can see, you know, what the other colleges were. Go ahead and move up some Shannon. There's the gender on people responding to the survey. We do, we do record gender. I'm not going to say too much about their, that, but you can, you can see the results there. Go ahead and move up a little bit more so we can see more of the survey. So in this particular survey, everyone, the following questions were all on a liquor type scale from strongly disagreed to strongly agree, which is seven. So that's the range of the scale. And what you can see in the column is doctoral students and their responses. So this is all doctoral students at UTEP and all master students at UTEP and their responses. Ideally, and how we would like to use the survey is that if we get enough data, what we would like to do is to go back to the programs and let programs know how they're doing. So if, I'm not going to use program names here, but if we get enough data in a program, I could go to program X and I can say, listen, you're doing a great job. Students are happy in your program. They think they're being prepared, et cetera. Keep up the good work. If there are areas where programs aren't doing as well, you know, so when we show data to programs, if we have a master's program, we will show them, here's what the university data are and here's where you are. And if a program is struggling in an area, then I can have conversations with them about, you know, what types of things are you doing? What could we do to improve, et cetera? The unfortunate thing about this first survey is that we, we only have those conversations with programs. I think our cutoff was we had to have 10 students in the program respond. So if 10 students responded, then we would talk to the program. But less than that, we're not going to individual programs. So because of the low response rate, we couldn't have too many discussions with programs. But those, I've already discussed with one program. There's a couple more that I'm going to be talking with in the near future. So you can see the questions there. A number of these questions are coming from research that suggests why graduate students essentially stop out of school. You know, if we're coming to school and don't get the degree. An example, that's the very first one. So the very first question, some students, when they come to a program, they expect certain things and when they arrive, they're not getting what they expected. So that's in there for that reason. If a program's lower in this area, then that's telling us that we need to do more so that when programs actually, when students enter the program, they know what to expect. They know what they're being trained for, et cetera. So in this case, we're just showing kind of the doctoral and master's means. And you can kind of get a look at that. And I'm not going to talk too much about the data there. Just more focused on the question. Evaluation criteria, this is another thing that students struggle with. If you, if you're in a program and you think that how you're being evaluated, that isn't showing kind of what you're learning and your skills are gaining, et cetera. Obviously, employment is a very big issue. People want to get jobs afterwards. So we're focusing on the skills you need to do that. Receiving periodic feedback is very important, you know, for all of us and, you know, obviously for students and programs. So that's another reason to drop out. The mentor question, so we ask if they have a mentor and it's a yes/no question. If students answer yes, then we have the next two questions. Is the mentor providing support for professional development? Relationships with mentors are very important for students in success in programs. So that's why we're asking that. You can see intellectually challenged, connection to peers. Connection to peers is another reason why students drop out of programs if you don't have good connection there. Morale important in program, opportunities for success, optimistic about graduation. Mental health, and one of our questions later is about mental health. Mental health is a critical issue in graduate school. Graduate schools stressful. There's lots of research suggesting there's higher levels of mental health problems among graduate students than others. So we're kind of asking about that, a couple of questions there about mental health and stress, I believe. And then finally, you know, the last question is, would you recommend this, this program to others? So that's the purpose of this, to just kind of give us a feel of how different programs are doing here. The intent of this is for us to have conversations. We also have short answers. I'm not going to go through these quite as much. But for students can write things about the programs and what they're experiencing. This is kind of qualitative summary of what we're seeing. And you can see, so this particular question is, what's the best academic experience? You know, the academics, something, things to do with academics was what the highest people mentioned. Then support, access to research, et cetera. And you can also see the low areas, funding, which I think is another one of the questions we have later. Go ahead and quickly, come on up Shannon. What type of changes would you make to programs? And so again, you can see, you know, what the suggestions were that we can kind of communicate anonymously to the programs to help them. And one more, or just two more maybe. What do you wish you'd known prior to starting the program? And I'm not going to go through the data on this. And additional comments, what people have. So we are using this. This is one of the mechanisms that we have to try to reach out and improve programs, improve what all of you are going through to make this, so that you're getting the skills and support you need to go on to be successful. So I think in the past, if you're in GSA last year, you saw some presentations with this. I kind of wanted to show you that the survey was done. And what will really need your help moving forward because we didn't have nearly enough data last year. And I'll be doing this in this process. So that's all I had to say about the survey. I'm happy to take any questions there, if there are any. Anything's in the chat or anyone wants to break in and ask me a question about that survey?
So far, there is nothing in the chat, Dr. Kreitz. But hopefully in the question answer session, maybe you might see more questions coming up.
Okay, okay. So, um. So is this the, or at least the ethics or the questions that were asked and shared?
So Dean Kreitz, it will be me and Tolu. Alternatively, we will ask the questions and then you.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you Nak. Thank you Dean Kreitz. Though the microphone was still flown to it in a little, so sometimes out here, sometimes I wouldn't. So the question is, during the current COVID situation, what are the steps taken or plans that the grad school has to ensure student access? So during the COVID, during the current COVID situation, what are the current steps taken or plans that the graduate school has to ensure student success post-graduation from UTEP? And how are we helping students find jobs or preparing them for a tough job market?
Okay, so that's an excellent question. One thing to keep in mind in jobs is how many different programs we have. So there are over 100 different graduate programs here at UTEP. And the job prospects for a PhD in chemistry are going to differ from an E D D in education, which will differ from, you know, a master's in nursing, et cetera. So at the graduate school level, what we're trying to do is focus on a few broad things that can help all students. One of the things that I wanted to mention that we've really started pushing in the last year is called an individual development plan. And if you go to our website, you can see these individual development plans. We've been rolling them out. We're trying to get programs to use them, especially doctoral programs because the time it takes for doctoral programs and all the independent work in doctoral programs and research, it's nearly essential in them. One of the aspects with an individual development plan is, you know, kind of goal setting. You know, we ask people to set goals and to, you know, for each year, for six months, those types of things and kind of progress to that. So that is one of the mechanisms that we're using. The other thing in the individual development plan that the graduate school has used is, I think, one of the first questions asks you to think about the types of careers you would like to go into. Research suggests that actually when people start graduate school, they often have one career in mind and it changes in route. So I think that in the instructions of our document, we actually are trying to get people to think about a couple of different career options and what they need to do to get to those careers. So let me give you an example from my own discipline. In psychology, when students come into our program, often, more often than not, they are focused on research and their thinking is that they want to get a job in a research institution. To do that, it takes certain number, certain types of things you have to do. The most important one is publications. You're going to have to get publications in a few of them while you're in graduate school. And it's, you know, it can be hard to do that. And so the other types of jobs that people will go for is, some people want to go to a teaching institution. And publications are important for that type of job, but not quite as important. You also need more experience with teaching in front of classrooms. And the last job in kind of my field where people go is, if they go into a job that involves kind of data analysis or program evaluation. So what we try to get people to do is think about these different careers, you know, to pick a couple of them and then to start talking with people in your program about which ones are best for you, what do you need to get to these programs and so forth. So that is one of the things that we're trying to do just to help people. Now, it's not necessarily related to COVID. It's just a good, good thing to do for everyone and we're really trying to push that. In fact, I mean, if you are asking us for money now for the graduate school, travel funds, research funds, we're going to be asking for these types of things. Another thing that we do is we try to do a lot of work on writing. Regardless of your graduate degree, writing is important in most disciplines. So we're, we're trying to push that. Excuse me. We're trying to push that and have workshops on writing. We actually, Dr. Deua, who's the associate dean of the graduate school, she recently received a grant to look at career pathways. This is just starting, but we're kind of using that grant to help us kind of track where people are going after school and what skills do they need so that we can help people to teach their students. And finally, I want to introduce Jesse Singleton, who is joining us today. So Jesse just joined the graduate school this week. His first day was Monday. He's waving his hand now. He is, has joined us and his focus is going to be on professional development and helping all of you with these types of things. This position has been kind of open for three quarters of a year. So we're very happy that Jesse's joining us and will kind of help us extend these types of things and help all of you be successful. Okay, that's it for that question.
Thank you. Let me go ahead and ask you the next question. So this question says, we understand that paying tuition for grad students is a tough task for the graduate school. But how about paying tuition for the PhD students who have cleared their candidency? That should be a great incentive for the students to quickly finish their course load and clear the proposal.
Okay, so this is very timely because I probably had four meetings this week with various people on how we can start paying tuition for doctoral students. You know, many institutions, probably most institutions at our level, there is some tuition support for doctoral students. Some students pay all the tuition. Some institutions pay much of it, you know, a big portion of it. This is something that UTEP has not been doing and it's been a prime focus of mine for a number of years before I joined the graduate school and I've been working on it. I have to say that it is a very complex issue on this and we are, we are working to resolve this. I've told a number of people, there's probably a dozen steps we have to go through to kind of solve this problem. And I'm not going to go through that now. That would probably take me a couple hours just to explain this. But we're making progress on this. Now, one issue is when we would pay tuition support. And you know, the question's kind of asking, could we do it at the end? That's a possibility. I think that our focus is probably trying to pay tuition at the beginning because that is when students are taking, you know, the heavier force load. When you have nine credit hours and not three. And so we're working on that. I mean, ideally, we are working to a point where we can pay tuition for all students. The problem is, is it, that takes about, I mean, this is an estimate, but we're talking about approximately $5 million a year is how much it's going to take to do this. We cannot just waive tuition. We have to find a way to pay for it, you know, on behalf of students. But, but we're working on this one. Unfortunately, we're not going to solve it quickly, you know, so don't hold your breath that this is going to be next year, this will be done. But it's, it's a big initiative. And anytime I talk about this issue, I will also say, one important thing is we need sources of money, endowments. So if you know people who are wealthy or want to support this idea, let me know and I will gladly ask them for money to help with this. Okay?
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be asking this one. How is the grad school helping grad students when it comes to mental health? Are there any programs or workshop designed specifically to address this serious issue?
Okay, so the first thing that I want to mention is that we're not counselors. Although my degree is in psychology, I guarantee you that you do not want me to be a counselor. So what we try to do at the grad school level, recognizing our limitations, is we, we're trying to work with the people who understand this and know this issue. And as I mentioned in the survey, this is a significant issue for graduate students. And it's even more so now with COVID. At UTEP, we do have the Counseling and Psychological Services Unit, CAPS, it's a short. And so CAPS is the unit on campus that really has the expertise for this and then have programs. And what we're trying to do is really promote what they're doing and working with them. So they have virtual workshops that they do and we make sure that we let people know and promote their workshop. They also have a little kind of CAPS to go series and we make sure that people know about that. So our focus is really to kind of, you know, work with the CAPS because this is their expertise and then kind of make sure that, we try to help them spread word among graduate students to do that. Last year, just another example of something we tried to do and we need to rethink. Last year, we actually had a peer support group that we tried doing. And this was in collaboration with CAPS. Unfortunately, the turnout was pretty low last year and, and so we couldn't justify keeping it going. But, but we're looking for ideas to do that. The last thing I'll mention about mental health issues is kind of going back to what I said before about individual development plans. An important part of that is kind of goal setting. And one thing that actually helps people, there's numerous things that help people with mental health issues, you know, from eating right to exercise, et cetera. But one, one thing that can be helpful is just having goals. It's easy to get lost in what's going on and pay attention to, you know, what's happening with COVID or the election or other stresses in our lives. And to some extent, kind of having a focus and a goal of what you need to get done to keep your eyes on that eventual, you know, the goal of the graduation is a useful thing as well. So that's not a counseling type of issue, but it is something that research suggests is useful. Okay?
Thank you Dean Kreitz. The next question is, it's been a while since PhD students' salaries were revised. Even though the tuition is not, is going up every year, salaries for TAs and RAs remain the same. When is the graduate school thinking of revising or raising the salaries of the grad student employees?
Okay, so salary is a very tricky issue because different units, you know, the graduate school actually doesn't control any money for salaries. So all of this is controlled in various units. So you know, the College of Science, you know, has control over those ones, et cetera. And what we're focusing on mainly is not salaries. There's kind of two ways that we can help with regard to funding. One, we could increase the salaries. The other is tuition support, which I just talked about. Where our focus is right now is really tuition support. You know, when I look at the other graduate programs, our peers, our salaries aren't terribly different from theirs. There are some places that have higher salaries. There are some places that have lower salaries. Where we really have a difference is in tuition support. So that, that is the big focus for us is to try to get that done.
Thank you. Tolu?
Yeah, I was reading through the questions and answers. Thank you Dean Kreitz. Due to COVID-19, my education has basically gone virtual and I did not sign up for an online experience. How can the university work with its students to ensure fair tuition, given the fact that we are not experiencing a normal graduate experience and yet to pay for a normal graduate experience?
Okay, so tuition is a very difficult thing to talk about because there's so many different factors that control that affect tuition and so many different things out there. So just one example, that's a simple one, is that we have some graduate programs that are completely online. They were designed to be online and the tuition was set. We have other ones that were not and now they are. You know, so if you get into complex things of, you know, can we reduce tuition for everyone? If possible, and that's another issue, or you know, or just ones that are affected and how we do that. So let me focus on the other aspect, which is the quality of education. You know, to try to make sure, this is one over which I have more control of. Sometimes when I look at problems, I kind of think, well, what can I do about that one? Tuition is a very, very difficult one. So me as the graduate dean, we'll have essentially no control over tuition. There's not much I can do. The quality of education is one that, in one sense, I'm here to help with. That is one of the reasons we have that survey that I reviewed earlier. To get data on where we're getting good, good things, to get feedback so I can work with programs to help them improve the quality. Obviously, this is a very unique situation with COVID and what's happening. But, but quality is still important. One of the things that we did as an institution is that we essentially entrusted our faculty and our programs to kind of do what they thought was best. So if you look at what some other institutions did, sometimes faculty were told, well, here's how you have to do this course. And here's what you have to do. And at many of those institutions, that resulted in some problems that we didn't have. In our case, we kind of let faculty decide, you know, what is best, what the people need to do. And what we found is that, you know, some programs have face-to-face components and a number of face-to-face components. They had to make adjustments to keep these small, to make them safe in a situation, but they're still there. Other, other things, there were no face-to-face components. There didn't need to be any. So programs kind of adapted. What I would suggest is this, if you think that you really need face-to-face components and they aren't being offered, that's something you really need face-to-face components and they aren't being offered, that's something that you need to make people aware of. Um you know, the department chairs would be the first step, uh the the college deans, so from health science, uh you might go to health science dean. And also myself, just for some of this stuff, to try to help with that. Um so so just kind of let us know on those types of things, keep us informed about that. Okay?
Yeah, thank you, Dean Kreitz. Nakul. In the current climate of policy changes for international students, what are the alternative careers other than in academia for PhD graduates you would recommend in twenty twenty one?
Okay, so in in some ways, I I talked about this earlier. Look, given the diversity of programs and the skills that people are doing, we have so many different programs and it's very difficult for me to kind of know, you know, here's what students in each program are going to do. This is uh and 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 so I'll come back to what I talked about earlier about the individual development program, uh individual development plan. That's what we're really trying to focus. We want all of you uh to work with people in the program to say, here are the types of careers I'm thinking. You know, what skills do I need to get to those careers? What types of things do I have to do uh to get there? So I I previously gave the example of of people in psychology, some go, want to go to research-type institution, some teaching, uh and someone wants to work in applied settings. The skills that people need are slightly different in those ones. Um you know, if you want to go to applied settings, you do need to know some research and you probably have to have, uh be working on some publications, have a publication. But you also really need to work in an applied setting and kind of see what some of that data is. Uh if you want to teach, you need to work in teaching situations, so. Our focus at the graduate school, I think, is to get all of you and also your programs thinking about this, engaged in this, to try to help you perform them all. Okay? That's it for that question.
Thank you. Um so this question says, would you consider revising the policy that grad students be enrolled full-time in order to be student employees? Who can we talk to if we feel we are being asked to do work that is beyond our job title? If we have already approached our supervisors and department chair?
Okay, I have two questions here. The first question, the answer is kind of unfortunate because there's nothing I can do about that policy, uh of working, uh you know, working uh half-time in order to get the uh or being a full-time student in order to to kind of work. That is um kind of state law there. Um. To be a student employee, you have to do that, so there's nothing that we can do there, there's no way I can revise that. On the second question, um if you feel that you're not, uh that you're being asked to do things that are inappropriate, that you don't have the skills for, et cetera. The people to talk to, um obviously, the department chair would be in that list, but if that's not successful, you have two options. One is to come to me, uh as the graduate dean, the other would be to go to the dean of the college. And that would be the next step there, so that we can kind of look into things and see what's going on.
Thank you. So moving to question and answer session. And we we have some questions here in the chat. And be- before we move there, just a small announcement that, once we are done with the question and answer session, uh Tolu has some uh announcement and he wants some feedback, so we will go back to that as well. So Dean Kreitz, here in the chat, uh there is this one question. Uh through the uh through the development of my project, I learned that I should have spent more time at the beginning when deciding what project to go for. I felt I did not have enough support during this, uh those critical days, before I selected an advisor. What can you tell us about that from the perspective of the graduate school?
Um you know, that is is a very good question and ones that that people have been struggling with for a long time is 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 uh is the relationship between advisors. In fact, in that survey, that's one of the things we're asking people, how how the relationships with advisors are. Um different programs have very different ways of determining advising and what's being done. Um and and that's an issue that I'm starting to kind of look into. Um one of the, one of the things that that the rules require is that programs should have handbooks and that I need to kind of look and approve those handbooks. Some of that approval process is just to make sure that a program doesn't have rules that conflict with university rules. Um but the other thing that I'm learning in the process of doing this, if programs kind of revise their handbooks and run them by me, is some of the different ways that that uh this is happening and how students pick advisors and so forth. So I actually, and I just worked on this earlier today, because I was working, looking at a revised handbook for one program. And I I have now kind of a list of of kind of here's some best practices and here's what to do. Uh and one of those topics is this issue of of selecting advisors and how to select advisors and uh you know, also if if things aren't right, um you know, and things aren't working, how do we get different advisors? So that's one of the things that we're working on at graduate school. It's not an easy problem to solve, uh given the range of disciplines, but but it's uh it's one of our concerns, one thing that we're trying to address.
Tolu, I think there is one one more question there in the chat, if you want to go ahead and ask.
Um yeah, thank you. It's from Lopez, same same person. It says, when paying tuition in these difficult times, it doesn't feel that good to see printed magazines I get in the email. And to see that parts of tuition that are dedicated to that could be diverted to more important aspects of academic life of students. Especially after changes to virtual sections and activities. I don't know if that's a question or a suggestion, Dean Kreitz.
Okay, uh yeah, I'm looking at the question there, um. I'm not quite sure how how to a- address that, um and we are yeah, and and we're trying to divert, um you know, as much as we can to help uh to help students, to help help uh you know, with this type of situation, uh both undergraduates and graduate students. Um you know, maybe we could always make the argument that that it'd be nice to have a little bit money here or take this from that, I mean, it's 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 difficult, you know, universities are very complex places, you know, we we we're an institution of uh you know, nearly thirty-five thousand people, uh you know, students, faculty, staff, um support, uh and and um just how this works when you have something that big is that that, you know, certain things are going on and and it's hard to cancel those or hard to kind of sometimes kind of connect some of this, but for the most part, we've been trying to devote as much uh resources as we can to kind of help help students, which sometimes that's direct support to students, uh and sometimes that's, you know, helping faculty to kind of, you know, transition to remote.
Yeah, Nakul. Uh ESU, are you there? You want to ask some question, right?
Yes, yes, Nakul. Thank you. Thank you, doctor. So this is ESU, I'm a PhD candidate in Environmental Science and Engineering Program. So I have three comments or suggestions, actually. So while I was joining the UTEP, actually, I was expecting the 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 professors to be greedy for publication, publish papers. So uh actually, some of the students, they generated plenty of results, but it's 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 a bad idea to put some of the manuscripts in shelf because it affects the student, it affects the professor, and it affects also uh the school. So it's better to encourage students to publish papers while uh there are students instead of after graduation, because it helps for the students to to explore for a job market. That's my, one of my concern.
Okay, so so let me, let me do that first, um for most areas, I think, um and and I, you know, I would love to know, there's differences across disciplines, but uh you know, I was talking about my discipline earlier, um if you are a student psychology and you want to go on to a research job, uh you might need four or five publications, uh maybe even more now, uh just to, just to get interviews, so. Many disciplines I know are really focusing, you know, that students take research and get publications. Um if that's not happening, I I'd be curious about knowing, you know, more about that type of situation. At least in the in the scientific field, I I think that's almost essential. Now, getting a publication can obviously be hard, there's lots of steps involved in that, but but uh I I would uh I I'm curious to know more about that, if it's being discouraged or what's happening there.
Okay, thank you. So you already mentioned the importance of publication for the job market, actually, so. Uh some of the students didn't have, some of the professors didn't have enough money to to publish papers for students, so. Uh I advise or I comment for the graduate school to help students on uh getting a fund for public uh because it takes a lot of money to publish papers, sometimes, some of the journal they ask are around two thousand dollars, so. That would be a good idea to help students or the professors to publish papers.
Okay, yeah, that's something that's starting to change, you know, it it used to be that that there wasn't a fee to publish papers and now there's a number of places where there are. Um and that's something we have, we haven't started to deal with yet, and I know that's happening at some other institutions and it's something that we're going to need to address, because that that is a legitimate concern that that's uh out there now.
Okay, so Nakul, I have a final comment, can I? So the other one is actually, most of the graduate students, they have uh LaTeX uh format for dissertation. But in the, in here in UTEP, we have only the the Word only, so it would be good for the graduate school to prepare LaTeX format for dissertation or thesis, because it makes your life very easy. So instead of preparing in Word, it would be good to prepare in LaTeX format. So that's that's my the that's that's called LaTeX, so it's like a program, but some of the students, some of the universes, they prepare a template for students, it's called LaTeX. So you will enter only your Word or your your image into the doc, then you can paper a PDF format dissertation or thesis. So most of the gra- most of the graduate schools, they have that. But I could not, I could not find any here in UTEP that.
Okay, so you just enter the image of the document?
Uh Dr. Kreitz, I think ESU is mentioning about LaTeX or Techmaker or Overleaf, uh which is quite popular these days. Uh which is a a totally customized uh document uh software which allows you to have a publication-quality PDFs as as an output. But it requires some coding and things like that. I guess he's mentioning a template of that.
Yeah, the 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 graduate school can prepare that, actually, the maybe from the computer science students, so. The graduate school can ask that, actually, for dissertation format, for thesis format, or for publication format, that would be consistent for the whole school. But it makes also your life very easy. Instead of working in Word, it takes a lot of time to to master your documents.
Right. I I I think ESU will, I I will definitely give a follow-up on that and Dean Kreitz, if you need some more information on that, I can share some with you. The next question is
I would love to have more information on that.
For sure.
One thing I'll mention is this, just about how the the dissertation is. One of the things we want to do, and I mentioned Dr. Ger earlier, um one of the projects that she's going to work on when we have time is to think a little bit more about the formats for thesis and dissertation. Um some of this is just the content of the format, because things are changing in certain fields. You know, it used to be, you know, centuries ago, that people wrote kind of this long document and then it was filed away in the library, but things are so different now with with publication formats, um you know, and there's electronic media and certain disciplines, it doesn't make sense to have a long document, you know, it it's more appropriate to have short things that are impactful. That's one of the things on our to-do list, is to think a little bit about what should be the the criteria for thesis and dissertation, to open up some alternative types of of ideas. This is different from kind of formatting it, but just thinking more broadly about about what we have to do, so that that's on our agenda. Um you know, in a, in a, there's there's another thing, at least it's it's sitting in front of it, but uh we hope to get to that in the not-too-distant future.
For sure.
Thank you.
Okay, can I ask my question now?
Please, please, go ahead.
Okay, um so thank you for the speech so far and um your time answering a lot of questions. So my question is, we're towards um international students who have been having financial issues um throughout this pandemic, you know, I believe that it's not been really easy for us as international students, and it'd be so great to have um a level of support from graduate schools. So I wanted to know if there's any plans as to what regards to that, if there's any plan to support international students who are having financial issues um at this time, so yeah, that's my question.
So we're doing as much as we can, the place to really look is student services. Uh so the dean of students, they have most of the money for support, the graduate school really doesn't have much in in that regard, and most of the connections. So the place to go for, you know, help in different ways, you know, temporary assistance and so forth is is to the dean of students, and there are mechanisms there when people need kind of short-term assistance or that type of thing to help. Um yeah, and unfortunately, as you know, I am, international students have been hurt really hard by COVID and responses to COVID and what's been happening here. We're all very aware of those, um we've been trying our best to do some of this. Sometimes we're kind of between a rock and a hard place, because there are things we want to do and can't do and and everything else, but but yeah, this has been a real concern across the country, it's not just here at UTEP, every place, every place we have is struggling with this, so. Uh we do understand this, we've been trying to do our best on this, uh it it's difficult.
That's true. I think you will find the link in the chat and if you want, I can, I can forward you more information on that.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Uh Pamela, I think you have a question. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you so much, uh Dean Kreitz. And more than a question, I think I have uh just a suggestion, and that is, I am a PhD student and I have to come to school because here in my lab, I have all my instruments, so I need to be in school. For me, it's not an option, uh to work from home because my instruments are here. And though maybe I don't have to be here, every day I have to be here most of the days. And so uh I have he- heard a lot about and I'm not complaining, I'm very happy with the COVID testing, I'm very happy that I have the opportunity to test every week. And I think that is just a marvelous uh thing that UTEP is doing, but I feel a little bit neglected because I always hear about the school and other organizations inside of school worry about people staying at home and getting depressed, or people staying at home and feeling isolated, or people staying at home and feeling like they are left out. But I am in school, I am coming every day, and I do feel isolated, I do feel a little bit left out, and even though I'm not, I do not feel depressed, I do feel a little bit unrepresented. So I would love to see some form of, um I understand we're in this two weeks, isn't it, but there's not even a place where I can go get a coffee here at school. So there's no habit for me, and so uh it's just a suggestion, I know that you don't have all the tools in your hands to solve this right now. I just want to put it out there, professor, that we, the PhD students that have to come to school, we are also isolated, we also feel a little bit left out, especially in the, in the food or even a coffee uh situation. Thank you, professor.
Yeah, I mean, and that's that's very true, I mean, I I work from home a lot, but I also go in occasionally and I I think there's been times where I went into work and you know, I was the only one in my building, so yeah, it it's uh it's affecting everyone. And you're right, you can't just kind of go and meet someone or see someone on the way, et cetera, so. That is a very true statement, and I'll I'll see if there's, if there's opportunities to make sure that other people are aware of this and we can do more, that would be great.
Thank you. A- any more questions here?
If I can, I'll just mention that there are
If I can, I'll just mention that there are a lot of, a lot of resources being posted in the chat. So following up on your questions and the answers that Dean Kreitz is providing and that your peers are providing, we're also trying to link a lot of these in the chat. So take a look there. And I'm also, Pamela, responding to your last point. I want to post a link to a survey the students office has opened through, I think, today or tomorrow on um dining services on campus specifically. So if you haven't already provided your feedback there, please do so, because they want to hear from you specifically about those points.
I still see one, one more hand raised here. According to
Yeah, yes, please.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I have, yeah, this follow-up question from my um other question. So I checked the funding website and found that some of the scholarships or fundings available are geared towards um PhDs. So what's the plan for MSc scholarships and the likes of them?
Uh, so which funding, um which funding site, are are funding sites at the graduate school?
I think so, yeah. I think it's the grad school funding.
Yeah, that's the one, yeah.
Okay, so so most of our things aren't just here for PhDs. So uh Allah Shannon, you know, but we we kind of have two aspects of funding. The main one, um well, I guess it depends what type of funding you're talking about. Um, are you talking about funding for research? Or are you talking about what what type of funding?
Scholarships and the likes of them, like financial aid, um scholarships, basically.
Okay, okay. So yeah, so um, yeah, unfortunately, uh you know, more of those, well, actually, no. They're, they're Not, not everything's funded to PhD, you know, to PhD students, but um we, we don't have lots of of options, especially for current students. Um, you know, I I will say that with regard to scholarships, funding there, type of thing. Um, you know, that, that's one of the problems that we face is that there's lots of needs out there and just not, not enough money. Um, yeah, am I missing anything? Are there other options out there? Uh maybe Shannon, if you know, or someone else, uh you know, with regard to helping.
Yeah. Sure. I I want to point out that, my daughter woke up a little cranky from her nap, so you might hear that. We, on our internal funding page, do note that there are two key opportunities that are open for sure to both master and doctoral students. Those are the travel grant and the Dodson Research Grant. Uh we just wrapped an application cycle for both. There's another travel grant deadline coming up at the end of this month. And given the current situation, we are accepting applications for virtual conference participation. Usually that's to fund your travel to present at a conference, but we know that that's not happening right now. So we're accepting proposals for um virtual conference fees and that type of thing. So that for sure, those are two ongoing opportunities that are open to both masters and doctoral students. We um have a number of other opportunities that are um open to both, that are specific in the time of the year. We have a summer award to um help us think about creative ways to improve graduate education or processes at the graduate school that we just launched last year. We do have um a nomination opportunity. So some of these are not direct applications, but awards for which your program director or a committee would nominate you. And those are things like our, our money to help master students who have stopped out of school, return to school. That's a new initiative we started last year. So we really do try to spread our precious few resources around to help students who are in both types of programs. Of course, the vast majority of our graduate students are master students. So we want to make sure that we're helping there where we can. But a lot of the scholarship money is actually not administered by the graduate school, but by the Office of Scholarships in tandem with the colleges and the programs. So there may be awards that are specific to your field that your program can tell you more about. And in the chat, I've linked on on our graduate school website under the external funding tab. There are two really good databases there, one from UCLA and one from University of Illinois, where you can set up a profile and search for external types of funding that can be specific to your situation, your field of study. And they're open to both, um you know, domestic students, international students alike.
Thank you. And I think we have one last question, Dean Kreitz. Uh I hope you don't mind. I think we are slightly over time, but let's go ahead with Rafael, I think you have a question for Dean.
Yes, it's gonna be pretty quick. Thank you very much, Dr. Kreitz, and thank you everyone for hosting this event. So, um I just have a question on, uh where could we get the results for the survey that you presented at the beginning of the of 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 your talk? And also if there's any possibility to get access to the data.
Um, to get access to the data? No, that won't be possible. Um, I mean, you know, for us to do this survey, I mean, this is to protect uh you know, all of the students, all of you for answering it. Uh it's very restricted as far as what we, what we can do with the data, who can look at it. Um, like I said earlier, I mean, our hope is to use this so that we can tell programs and help programs kind of improve. Um, you know, but to even do that, um uh you know, we need enough people in that program to respond. And my thinking is, is uh usually ten, that's the ballpark figure I have. If if, you know, those nine people are programmed to respond, we won't even talk to the program about what the data are. You know, we need, we need enough students doing that. So no, we can't give access to the data. Um, with regard to the survey, uh that I think that I can share. Let me think about it briefly, and then if I can, we'll, we'll go ahead and share it. I need to make sure that doesn't conflict with anything that we said. Um, and and uh, you know, the IRV or or anything there, but I don't think it does. So I don't mind sharing that, because it's very general. It's looking at just the university and it doesn't even have specific numbers in there. But but let me, let me just double check. I don't want to do anything that's going to get us in trouble. And then if I can't share that, we'll, we'll let people know.
Thank you.
Yeah, um thank you. Thank you, Dean Kreitz. Thank you so much for, for coming on at this time. Thank you for your time. Thank you for the heart responses also. Thank you, Dr. Shannon. Always be the go-to person all the time. Thank you so much. And and thank you, Nakul. Nakul is the, is my, is my predecessor, is is yeah, and he's the president of of Graduate Student Assembly. Um, so, and thank you for everyone who showed up. It's, it's, it's really a great time. So two things I want to talk about is, I'm the representative of graduate student at the SGA. So I'm entitled to a particular, to a special project once in the semester. So, and the project basically is to serve all grad students. And I could have taught some what to do, but the other way around is to ask you guys on what are your suggestions? I think I have a little amount of money that we could spend. My, my suggestion at first was, so I found out that um, um since everything has become virtual, we, grad students has begin to spend more time online staring at the screen. And I personally wasn't using glasses until like a month ago. So, so, so I, I, I feel that this has affected some people's eyesight in a way. So I'm, I'm suggesting the possibility of maybe distributing like this, which is like a blue ray glass, that would have very small eye damage or damage to the eyes. So I could, I think, the funding could suffice for like twenty students or get twenty of this. Except I get other people that might want to partner with me. But I don't know if you have, then it will be randomized and I think that would be a survey for every I think that would be survey to students and those who think they need it. And then we could randomize, because we have limited amounts. But I don't know if you have suggestions, you could um send it on the chat. I put my email, then you could also send it to Nakul too. So we'll talk about it, and whatever we come up with, we'll send the mail and 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 then we'll conclude on that. Then the other thing is, um sustainability projects. I'm in a committee for SG also. And like I would say, I, Dr. Shannon would not get, I mean, we have a lot of money, right? Except with a lot of projects. So the whole idea is to create projects that is sustainable in a sense, you know, environmental sustainability. And if you have such projects at hand, there is money to fund. All we just need is a valid project. Then we'll talk about the proposal and we'll fund it. And so the one that looks like it is the travel grant that Dr. Shannon talks about. But that travel grant she talked about is for grad school. There's a provision for also student government association. It's called So we also have, um I think it's about seventy thousand. I could say this because that's the publicity we're doing now. So that people know that we have so much money and you need to come and get it in a way. But but it has to be projected towards, you know, virtual meetings and and all of that. So if you have applications fees you're thinking of, it's just a way, I think, the old school, like the question already asks that though, just the way everybody's trying to help everybody, you know, students especially to survive at this period. You have an application fee, you have a virtual conference fee, you need to pay at this time. I think it's important you could apply. And I think the deadline is in like twelve, uh seven days or so, like the last day for application. So you could apply it so fast, and I think your bill should be passed um almost immediately. Yeah, and I think with this, I would like to say thank you to everyone, and I would hand it over to Nakul, yeah.
Well, you already thanked everyone. So again, let me thank, thank you, everyone. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you, Dean Kreitz. Thank you for your time. Thank you for answering all those questions.
You're welcome. Thank you for putting a sound on and all of you for showing up.
Thank you, Dr. Connolly, and thank you, everyone, everyone. Thank you. Take care and stay safe.